Hafedze and Manana Sidzus. This 32nd Guam Legislature's call to session this morning. If we can have the clerk please call, roll call. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm going to go ahead and ask if Senator Aline Yamashita could lead us in prayer. And for the recitation it'll be Senator Mike Siniklas.
(Inaudible). Your Lord, as we start our main session, please guide us. Help us, remember, that respect and honor is the way we come. Please help us deliver it to the struggle there in the open. Law and order, our mission. As we pray, we pray for peace and harmony, for all of our families to be able to draw on opportunities. All of our.
War in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Thank you, Father, Son, and Spirit. Thank you, Senator Yamashita. At this time to do the recitation of the unifresi, Senator Mike Siniklas.
(Inaudible).
At this time to sing the Guam hymn, I'm going to ask Senator Tony Ada, and then to do the national anthem, Senator Chris Duanez.
(Singing) Panokita moru, purita nota, kanka nata na na ito duhi lta. Para i hora, para i gloria, habiba i isla se parara. Para i hora, para i gloria, habiba i isla se parara. To duhi tempuhi pa para i ta, zan gini la yitna beni shon. Kontra i liru, napasapuham, zuz protei hislan wam. Kontra i liru, napasapuham, zuz protei hislan wam. Oh, see, can you see, by the altarly light, what so proudly we hail, at the twilight's last gleaming? O'er the skies and bright stars, through the balestine sky, o'er the ramparts we watch, were so gallant each tree. And the rocket's glare, the must-bursting red, gave proof through the night, that our flag was still there. Oh, see, the stars spangled banner yet swinging, o'er the land of the green, and the home of the brave.
Thank you. Thank you to Senator Mike Siniklas, Senator Tony Ada, and Senator Chris Duanez. At this time, ladies and gentlemen, I ask that the clerk please call roll call.
Senator Tom Ada.
President.
Senator Tony Ada.
Good morning.
Senator Uggan.
President.
Vice Speaker Cruz. Senator Duanez.
President.
Senator Luntiaako.
President.
Senator McCready.
President.
Senator Morrison.
President.
Senator Munya Barnes.
Manana Sidzus, Gaija.
Senator Pangolinan.
(Coughs).
Senator Rispisho.
(Coughs).
Senator Rodriguez.
(Coughs).
Senator Siniklas.
President.
Speaker Wampat. Senator Yamashita. Madam Speaker, there is a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Right this time, I'd like to address the Majority Leader. Good morning, Senator Rispisho.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and good morning. I move that we excuse those senators not yet present for session this morning.
On that motion, without any objection, motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move that we approve the Legislative Journal dated April 9th and through April 15, 2014, as well as May 1st, 2014, subject to correction.
On that motion, without any objection, motion carries.
And I thank you for the approval of that motion, and I want to just state for the record that we're very happy with the work of the clerk and her staff, as well as MIS, Madam Speaker, and colleagues. All the journals have been uploaded on the Legislature's website, and what they've done this time around that's a lot different than the departure from past journals is if the member of the public is going to follow these journals, everywhere there's a mention of a bill, they've actually provided for a link, and so you could click on that link and then you'll see the bill, you'll see any document that they're referencing, and the journal, of course, is very exhaustive and very comprehensive, and so I like at this time that we thank our Madam Clerk and her staff, as well as MIS and all those involved for updating the Journal.
We can give them a round of applause for that one.
I think so, it's appropriate.
Yes. Round of applause. Yay!
And we had a FOIA council the other day, and a member of that council said that he is very pleased with what he's seeing so far, and coming from that person, I think that's also very important to note, so thank you.
Thank you, Senator Rispisho, and I also want to note, as it relates to the linking system, they're making sure that all those protocols are in place, and if there's any problems, that they could be able to call the Legislature and make sure that if there's any concerns, that they can address it then. Yeah, and it should be up by the end of this business day, okay?
Thank you. Madam Speaker, on item eight, there are communications and petitions, and I move that they be appended to a session journal.
Without any objection, motion carries.
Madam Speaker, there are messages from Imacalay in Guam, and I also move that they be appended to a session journal.
Without any objections, motion carries.
There are reports of standing committees, and I also move that these reports be appended to a session journal.
Are there any objections? No objections, motion carries.
And there are no reports of select committees, so on item 12, the introduction and first reading of bills and resolutions, I move that Bill Number 329-32COR through Bill Number 330-32COR be given its first reading.
On that motion, without any objection, motion carries.
I move that Resolution Number 372-32LS through Resolution Number 375-32LS also be given its first reading.
Without any objection, motion carries.
Madam Speaker, I move that Certificate Number 128-32LS to Certificate Number 131-32LS also be given its first reading.
Are there any objections? No objections, motion carries.
Madam Speaker, under motions, I move that any resolution of commendatory or congratulatory in nature that's introduced for the duration of this session week, that it be adopted, that the sponsor work with the legal counsel and the clerk's office in the preparation of these resolutions or certificates, and that all senators be co-sponsors of these resolutions or certificates that are commendatory, congratulatory, or condolence in nature.
Without any objection, motion carries.
Can I get a one-minute recess?
We'll go ahead and take a one-minute recess. Back from recess, Senator Rispisho, Majority Leader.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker and colleagues. Madam Speaker, we took a brief recess to get a resolution to a request by Senator Tom Ada on the matter of Bill 328-32, an act to approve and adopt the CIP schedule and land use designations in the Jose de Leon Guero Commercial Port of Guam Master Plan Update 2013 Report. He's requested the Speaker that she waive the public hearing requirement pursuant to Section 6.04D, one of our standing rules, and 2GCA 2103A of the Guam Code annotated, and so I'm pleased to report that the Speaker has favorably responded on the waiver of this public hearing request, and that she certifies that this bill meets one of the requirements set forth in 2103A of Title II GCA, and the requirement for a public hearing is hereby waived, so having these two documents, particularly the Speaker's waiver, makes this bill eligible for placement on the session agenda, and I then moved it to be placed in the second reading file and that it be placed numerically.
On that motion, without any objection, motion carries. Senator Rispisho.
Okay, Madam Speaker, on item 14, legislative concurrence, if there are no other motions from the Committee on Education, okay, from the Committee on Education, Public Library, and Women's Affairs, on the nomination of Maria Flor Herrera to serve as a member of the UOG Board of Regents, I move that that be placed in the voting file.
Without any objections.
Upon the submission of the committee report, yeah.
Without any objection, motion carries.
And from the Committee on General Governmental Operations and Cultural Affairs, on the nomination of Michelle Hope Tytenow to serve as a member of the Guam Parole Board with a recommendation to do confirm, I move that also be placed in the voting file.
Without any objection, motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. We may now proceed to the second reading file. Thank you.
At this time, we are at Bill Number 34-32COR. I'll call the author, Senator Tony Ada, Anthony Ada. You're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to make a motion to move Bill 3432COR as amended by the Committee on Aviation, Ground Transportation, Regulatory Concerns, and Future Generations to the third reading file. I'd like to speak on the motion, please.
Without any objection, yes, you may, Senator Ada.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, amended Bill 34-32 is a culmination of three years of work between my office, the Guam Automotive Dealers Association, the Department of Revenue and Taxation, and Senator Siniklas's committee. And it's easy to recognize the efforts of John Camacho and Marie Benito up at Department of Revenue and Taxation, but I also want to recognize the efforts of Maria Flores and Angel Mendiola at the Department of Motor Vehicles, Van Shelley and Jay Jones from the Guam Automotive Dealers Association, and Mr. Jermaine Alerta from Senator Siniklas's committee. Bill 3432 is truly a public-private partnership, and it allows the Director of Revenue and Taxation to authorize automotive dealers, under certain conditions, to issue vehicle registration on new vehicles. And Madam Speaker, what this does is that it actually frees up our people up at Rev and Tax that handle the automotive dealers, and they would be able to turn around and service the public at a better, a better way of serving our people, and having the automotive dealers, giving them that ability to issue the registration up at their dealerships, would really streamline the process of getting vehicles registered, new vehicles registered on island, and it's just a win-win situation for both the government, the people, and the automotive dealers, and I humbly ask my colleagues for their support on this measure. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Tony. Anybody else wishing to speak on the main motion? Senator Rodriguez, sure, recognized. Back from recess, Senator Rodriguez, you have the floor. Okay. On the main motion, I welcome Speaker Pangolinan. You're recognized on the main motion.
Buenos, and Sidzus, ma'asai, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I certainly rise in support of the legislation that's being proposed here in 34-32. Like many of us, we continue to look at ways in which this government can move towards providing and expanding the ability to access government services, as well as licenses and such requirements to work and live on Guam beyond what we traditionally see of being done by the government, and certainly this is a step in that direction. And due to the, while the bill may look, seemingly look simple, it really is complicated, and that, I think, testifies to the fact that it's taken this long to ensure that the infrastructure on the technology side is in place in order to carry out the intent of the legislation. I do have on page two of the bill, they're not numbered, so it's just the second page, on line 14, where the authority to revoke a dealer's authorization prior to the expiration of the contract for cause, or at the request of the dealer, I think that what we're saying here is that you would revoke the license to issue these temporary license plates and certificates of registration, but rather than at the request of the dealer, I couldn't see why a dealer would request that his license be revoked. So I would suggest maybe that the Director of Revenue and Tax may revoke a dealer's authorization prior to the expiration of the contract for cause, or may voluntarily surrender his authorization, so that if he wants to, he can say, "I don't want to do this anymore," but to request it to be revoked, I think when he's not doing anything wrong, so that would be the amendment I would make, Madam, to strike or at the request of the dealer and just put, "Or may voluntary surrender his authorization."
Would that be "or may voluntarily"? Can you just read it one more time, Speaker Ben? Delete "or" at the, I mean, at the request of the dealer.
Request of the dealer, correct.
And add "or may voluntarily."
Surrender its authorization, the dealer's authorization.
It's or the dealer? You want it's or the dealer?
It's, it's referring to the dealer.
Okay. On that motion, are there any objections? Motion carries, Speaker Ben.
The only other question I have, Madam Speaker, is in the discussions I've had, I'm kind of just not, a little unclear on temporary registration certificates. I'm very familiar with temporary license plates, and that's because of a function of not being able to have enough temporary plates on and so forth, but I'm kind of curious about a temporary registration certificate. When would that occur? And I'm just not familiar that that exists even. I'm sure it may have, but perhaps the author would yield to that question of what, in what instance would a temporary registration certificate be issued?
Senator Tony Ada, would you like to yield?
Thank you, Madam Speaker, yes. I believe that when they issue a temporary license plate, that it has a temporary registration with it, that just, it just goes to show that that decal, that plate, that temporary plate goes with that temporary registration. Yes.
All right. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. So, Madam Speaker, other than that, once again, I, you know, commend the author for this bill and the hard work and the time that it's taken to bring it to this floor, and I'm sure that given what has occurred over the last two to three years, that once implemented, this should flow quite smoothly due to the planning and the consultations that have taken place over the timeline involved, so thank you, and Sidzus, ma'asai, Madam Speaker.
Buen pavez, Speaker Pangolinan. Anyone else on the main motion? If not, Senator Ada would like to close.
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd like to thank my colleagues for their input. Madam Speaker, I'd just like to make an amendment to add Senator Pangolinan and Senator Siniklas as a third and fourth co-sponsor. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
On that motion, without any objection, to place Senator, I mean, Speaker Pangolinan and Senator Siniklas, and to move it to the voting file, no objection, motion carries. The report on 78, we're still waiting for that, and I'm going to go ahead then and entertain Senator Tom Ada on Bill 131-32COR.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move that Bill 131-32 be placed in the third reading, and I would like to discuss it.
Senator Ada, is that as amended or as introduced?
Oh, I'm sorry. Bill 131-32, as amended by the author.
On that motion, no objection. Please proceed, Senator Ada.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. What Bill 131 does is it actually places the authority for the permanent posting of speed limits on our highways and gives that authority to the Department of Public Works. Currently, the law places that authority with the Guam, with the Chief of Police, with the Guam Police Department, and what it does on Section 2, for example, the Chief of Police may actually go out there there and post temporary speed limits, depending on the situation at hand, in order to be able to allow traffic to move safely. But a good recent example is the recent discussion about changing the speed limit from the power plant in PT all the way down to Naval Station from thirty-five miles an hour up to, to post it up to forty-five miles an hour. And right now, that issue will have to be, is being under consideration by the Chief of Police. With Bill one-thirty-one, that discussion really would then be placed with the Department of Public Works. And the rationale for putting this authority with the Department of Public Works is that it is really that department that does the necessary engineering studies as to how to design the roads. And they also have an Office of Highway Safety, which collects data on the performance of traffic on these roads. And so definitely, I think it's only appropriate that the Department of Public Works be the one to address these questions. The other thing that the bill does on Section Three is, of course, the mayor's counsel is very, very concerned about the fact that they don't want, they would like to at least be consulted when, if the Department of Public Works is going to come in and decide, for example, to increase the speed limit to a higher speed or whatever, within, on the secondary roads. And so that will basically be your village roads. And so they would like to at least be consulted, that the Department of Public Works is considering raising the speed limits and to get their input. But of course, the input, there's a, you know, we don't want this thing just hanging out there forever. So basically, the department will be required to give notice to the mayor of their respective village. The mayor would have approximately ten days to provide a response. And then, from there, the Department of Public Works would take that into consideration to make its final decision. So this change in the legislation was also prompted at the request of the Federal Highway Administration, which of course funds a lot of our road construction projects on the primary roads, the routed highways. And so I would just ask my colleague to favorably, colleagues to favorably consider Bill one-three-one-dash-three-two. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Tom Atta. On the main motion, anyone else wishing to speak? Senator Respechua, you're recognized. Majority Leader.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, this bill makes a lot of sense in the sense that it kind of updates some areas of the code to make it more appropriately designated by the Director of Public Works. Because as we know, they have that Division of Office of Highway Safety, which is certainly federally funded program, but they are at, they're at the, within the Department of Public Works and have, are available to be a resource to the Director of Public Works. I just consulted with the, with the author of the bill. And in Section Two, it says here that the Chief of Police can authorize, be authorized to designate as may be reasonably necessary and on a temporary or intermittent basis. And then on Section Three, it provides that the Director of Public Works makes the, establishes and posts the permanent speed limits on primary and secondary roadways on a more permanent basis with the input of the mayor. I was just wondering if there's a conflict here in a sense that if the director establishes speed limits for these roadways, what then, what then, what kind of role then would the Chief of Police be playing if they're going to be designating these roadways on a temporary basis? And the sponsor just explained if there's like a traffic fatality or something, right? Or there's a pothole or the road kind of caves in. But in order to avoid any conflict, I was wanting to offer on line nine after designate, say unless authorized designated pursuant to Section Three A of this act. So that way, my thinking is that unless that roadway is permanently, once it's been permanently designated as a turn speed limit by the Director of Public Works, the Chief of Police cannot go in and say, "Let's go and make these temporary reductions in speed limit." But then again, we'd also have to account for who would have the authority if in the event there's maybe the one lane of the highway is blocked off pursuant to another statute or, Tom, do you see a conflict? So I yield, I ask the sponsor to yield to a question. How can I offer a friendly amendment in a way that once the road speed limit has been designated by the Director of Public Works, the Chief of Police can't go in and, you know, on his or her own, decide that that roadway is going to be reduced to a certain speed limit on a temporary basis? Maybe we can make it clear unless there's a declaration of emergency by the Chief of Police or someone, some mechanism so that these two authorities don't overlap each other.
Senator Tom Atta, would you like to yield to that question?
Madam Speaker, I think the intent here in Section Two is that we recognize that the Chief of Police certainly has the responsibility of enforcing traffic safety laws on our highways. And so let's take, for example, that situation that we had up in Yumatic, going up from Agate where the side of the road was starting to cave in. Certainly, it would not be safe for vehicles to continue traveling at the posted speed. And so in a case like that, really, the Guam Police Department should step in and post the speed limits that are less and safer to travel, to go in there until the situation can be addressed. And then once that is addressed, after the road was corrected, then of course, GPD will pull out of the picture there. But I think the distinction, the difference here is that GPD can go in and actually post temporary speed limits in order to ensure safe movement of traffic. Otherwise, if there's no conditions like that that exist, then DPW really goes out there from the beginning and sets those speed, speed limits. If the, if my colleague wants to introduce legislation that further distinguishes that, I certainly would welcome it. Otherwise, I think the phrase on line nine and ten, that the Chief of Police is authorized to designate as may be reasonably necessary, I think might be sufficient, and on a temporary or intermittent basis. So, but if additional language is needed to further clarify that, then I certainly would welcome any suggestion.
Thank you. Majority Leader, does that address your agreement?
Yeah, I appreciate the response of the sponsor of the bill. And it just leads me to ask another question. How long is the temporary designation for? Because I can certainly see when jurisdictions overlap, you might, and this is the case where there's some stretch, stretches of road that's thirty-five miles per hour supposedly, and people are feeling it should be forty-five miles per hour. What if the Chief of Police, "I'm going to designate that same stretch of road to be thirty-five miles per hour, and I've determined that my actions are reasonable and necessary, and it's going to be on a temporary or intermittent basis." How long can he make that designation for, is my question?
Senator Atta, would you like to yield?
But, you know, I'm certainly in support of the bill, but I just wanted to generate these discussions for the record and so that, so that the legislative intent will be so that these two entities would have to work together. And I'm thinking that if that Director of Public Works determined what that speed limit ought to be with the support of and input of that respective mayor, and there's some compelling reason, that's reasonable, for that speed limit to be reduced in those instances, then the Chief of Police would have that authority. And so I guess hoping that they, if this law, if this bill passes and it comes law, that they also be encouraged to establish a memorandum of agreement to set those kinds of parameters. So in the event there is an emergency, it'll be very clear who would have the jurisdiction, and they won't spend all that time in a kind of power struggle when that, when the determination of the speed limit needs to be made right away. I won't make any amendments to the bill, only to say that what we could do after the bill passes and signed into law, I'm sure the sponsor, and I'll join the sponsor, to encourage them to develop an interagency memorandum. That won't have to be adopted through the AAA. We don't want to certainly micromanage that process, but encourage something so that the spirit of the law would remain intact. Thank you.
You're welcome. Majority Leader, at this time, Senator Frank Huggan on the main motion.
Thank you very much. Good morning, Madam Speaker, and to our fellow colleagues. I just have a, I guess, a continuing thought with regards to the previous speaker in terms of what we're doing right now is I understand why the good sponsor would like to take the authorization and the designation and the establishment of some of the speed limits and transfer it over to DPW, because rightfully so, Federal Highway Administration, it's a, it could be a funding issue. And they may have a little bit more flexibility and resources to be able to allocate specifically towards the installation of signs. But my concern, Madam Speaker, is our police department, the Guam Police Department and our police officers are the ones that are patrolling our streets on a daily basis. And knowing full well that they know where the accidents occur, they know where some of these concerns exist with regards to our highway and our speed limits, I really think that aside from the temporary and the intermittent establishment of speed limits because of certain situations, whether it be construction, whether it be a temporary incident, I believe that they really should continue to be an integral part of this process. And I share that concern only because, like I said, I understand that DPW is responsible specifically for the construction and the repair of our highways, especially our primary roads and in some instances our secondary roads. But in the same token, our police officers are the ones that on a daily basis go out there and they see some of these situations and some of these concerns, which affect our roadways as well as the safety of our people. So right now, I don't have any specific amendment with regards to changing the entire process because really, we're removing now the Guam Police Department almost in totality with the exception of temporary identification of the speed limits and also intermittent interruptions or establishment of speed limits. But we are removing them completely from the process. And I think that just based on the explanation that I provided, that they would, they should play a very integral part in the establishment of speed limits. And let me just share with this, share this with you, Madam Speaker. I think that there's one particular roadway which is just past Adalup, taking that curve. If it were not for the collective efforts of the Guam Police Department and the Department of Public Works in reducing the speed limit there, and then the police department enforcing it to some extent, then that speed limit will continue perhaps to be at the thirty-five miles per hour authorization when in fact GPD stepped in and they said as a result of the increased number of accidents there, that they had to reduce it to a lower speed limit. And that came out directly from law enforcement officers rather than from the Department of Public Works. And that's where I, I think that we really need to continue to encourage the involvement of the Guam Police Department in this entire process. So I don't have any amendment, but I wanted to share that concern because the reality is, is that our police officers are the ones that are patrolling the streets, and they know where many of these concerns may surface, and they should really, rightfully so, be part of this entire process. Thank you very much, and I hope the sponsor understands my perspective. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Huggan. On the main motion? Anyone on the main motion? If not, Senator Tom Atta, would you like to close?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I certainly appreciate the discussion from my colleagues. And I think, I certainly recognize the issue about traffic safety on the roads. And certainly, Department of Public Works is also concerned about that. And that is taken into consideration when highways or roads are being designed and constructed. So that certainly is still foremost in their minds. But DPW, Department of Public Works, also is concerned about the movement, the efficient movement of traffic throughout our islands. And so based on that consideration, which really kind of is the bigger picture, is where the appropriateness of the setting of speed limits being placed with the Department of Public Works, making sure that we can efficiently move traffic from point A to point B with, of course, safety in mind. While I appreciate, of course, the discussions and the fact that Bill one-three-one puts this authority with the Department of Public Works, certainly doesn't mean that that interaction and cross-communications between the law enforcement agency and the agency that designs and constructs and maintains the roads should continue to go on throughout the course of the life of that, the service life of that road. Thank, and so, Madam Speaker, I move that Bill one-three-one-dash-thirty-two be moved down the voting file, and I request my colleagues to favorably consider the bill. Thank you.
On that motion, without any objection, motion carries. Next on the agenda, ladies and gentlemen, is bill number... I'm gonna, I'm gonna go, it's two oh three, but I'm gonna go ahead and address the Majority Leader.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, the sponsor of Bill two oh three dash three-two, Senator Duennias, has asked that it be set aside and that when he's had some information that he's trying to put together, when that is available, then he would request you to have this legislature, hear his bill on the agenda. So we just set it aside and that he'll advise you when he's ready.
Without any objections, motion carries. Senator Rodriguez, are you ready with two-three-nine? Okay. Senator Tom Atta on two-two-seven?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I would like to move that Bill two-two-seven-dash-three-two COR, as substituted by the Committee on General Governmental, Government Operations and Cultural Affairs, be placed in the third reading file, and I'd like to speak on it.
Yes, you may. Please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, what Bill two-two-seven-dash-three-two does is it seeks to create a special purpose entity, which is really closely linked with the Guam Power Authority, for the purpose of being able to go out to the bond market to borrow funds, which will be used to convert the fifteen thousand streetlights that we, the existing, that are existing out there in the, on our island, and also to be able to, to add an additional one thousand streetlights to our villages so that we can provide more lighting in our villages to improve the safety of our community. Now, the reason why a special purpose entity is being sought is that although on the one hand, the Guam Power Authority could actually on its own... hand, the Guam Power Authority could actually on its own go out to the bond market and, and actually go out and borrow the, the 15 million or so that's, that's needed, but if it does that, the cost of doing that is going to be a lot greater simply because it would have to meet other requirements such as meeting a 1.75 debt ratio that the Public Utilities Commission has placed on the Guam Power Authority. But with the special purpose entity, what it would actually be able to do is it would actually be able with the back, the credit rating, the backing of the credit rating from the Guam Power Authority, be able to go out there to the bond market to borrow this money. And then that special purpose entity, upon obtaining the necessary funds, would then go out on a procurement to obtain the necessary, procurement of the necessary devices and the installation of these streetlights. Now, the special purpose entity will actually be an organization that will have a Board of Directors to govern it. And the Board of Directors will actually be three members from the existing Consolidated Commission on Utilities. And so they, that board, that three-member body will actually then be governing this special purpose entity. The management of the special purpose entity, the, would actually, it would have a general manager, which will be the, the, the current general manager of the Guam Power Authority. It will have a chief financial officer, which will be the current chief financial officer. So it's really a, a, I guess you could call it a shadow entity, but according to the Bond Council, these special purpose entities are certainly an accepted means of being able to, for, for an organization such as the Guam Power Authority, to be able to go out and borrow money in the case, in our case here, for the streetlights without having that debt on its books and then have to carry, you know, have to put up the, borrow additional money so that you can have the debt service ratio that's required, the 1.75. Under the special purpose entity, that debt service ratio certainly will be a lot less. So, now with this bill, this is really one of a two-part, the first of a two-part bill. So what Bill 227 does is it simply sets up the special purpose entity for the purpose of being able to finance the purchase and installation of new LED streetlights. What will follow after this, if this gets approved and, and the authorization is given to set up this, this special purpose entity, is that then the Guam Power Authority will be coming in with a specific bill to request authorization to, I mean, I'm sorry, the, the special purpose entity will actually be coming in to issue, to request authorization to be able to go out and borrow the necessary funds that are needed to convert the, the 15,000 streetlights that we have. And so that's the second part to this. And as we are speaking, they are, they're putting their numbers together as to exactly how much will be needed to, to get this conversion accomplished. So with that, Madam Speaker, I certainly would look forward to any discussions from my colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Tom. Senator Mike, you're recognized on the main motion.
Madam Speaker, I, I really appreciate the intent of the author to try and find a way for us to be able to move forward the transition of our streetlights into LED lights. I don't think there's a single member of this body who would think that that's a bad, a bad step for us to be taking for this government. What really concerns me is the fact that we're going to be going out and borrowing to do this. When the public hearing was held for this bill, I asked a series of very direct questions to the individuals from GPA who were present trying to make this, this idea sound like something that we should move forward with. And I actually got more and more concerned as my questions got answered. My first question was how much would it generally cost, do they think, for us to be able to implement converting all of our streetlights to LED? And they said that the figure was about $60 million. And I said, okay, if it's going to cost us $60 million, how are we going to pay for the borrowing in order for us to convert all of these lights? And they said, oh, the energy savings that we realize from using LED will pay for the cost of borrowing the money to install the lights. And I said, okay, how soon will we pay this off? And they said, oh, it'll take us about 10 years to pay it off. And I sat back and I said, okay, so we're going to borrow to install lights and we're not going to save any money until after the lights are paid off? And they won't be paid off for 10 years? And they said, yeah, that's about right. And I said, what's the warranty on the lights? And they said, the warranty is 10 years. And I said, so we're going to borrow to buy these lights and we're not going to be able to pay these lights off for 10 years? And once they're actually paid off, we're not going to have any more warranties on them? And they said, that's correct. So I said, we're not going to realize any return on investment until, until after the actual investments warranties have expired? And that was when I just started really getting concerned. And then I asked more questions, Madam Speaker. I said, what happens if over the life of those 10 years, when we're waiting to pay off those lights, we have a storm? And those lights get blown away? Are those lights going to be covered from losses in a storm? And they said, no, ensuring the lights would cost too much for us to be able to move it forward that way. And so I asked, when we do have a storm, how many streetlights do we typically lose? And they said, we could lose as much as 30% of our lights. So if we buy these lights, we're going to have to cross our fingers that we don't have a storm over the next 10 years, and if we do, we're going to potentially lose 30% of the investment. And what's dangerous about that, Madam Speaker, is let's say we buy these lights, we borrow $60 million, we buy these lights, we install them, and a year later, we have a storm and we lose 30% of it. Our people are still on the hook for paying for the bond for those lights for the next nine years. And we're not going to be realizing any energy savings because we've lost 30% of the lights, but we're still going to be paying the full cost of the bond. So it, from a, from an investment perspective, Madam Speaker, the risk versus reward is very, very unattractive for me. I cannot imagine committing our people to a 10-year bond on an investment that's not going to have any return until after the warranties have expired, and the risk on that investment is 30% loss in a single storm. And we've, we've been through times in my lifetime where we've had successive storms. So at a 30% loss rate, we can wipe out 90% of our streetlights in three storms. So I'm very, very concerned, Madam Speaker, about the idea of us borrowing to pay for these lights. And, and I sit back and I ask myself, why do we have to borrow to start moving in this direction? Why can't we realize cost savings in our agencies and then say, okay, we've saved 20 grand, let's go buy one LED light, it'll last for 10 years, it has a warranty? And why can't we just gradually move ourselves in that direction? Why do we need to go out and borrow? And these are the kind of things that very much concern me, Madam Speaker, when it comes to our Economic Development Authority, because they're so quick to say, hey, yeah, go ahead and borrow. But where's the fiduciary responsibility in doing this kind of analysis and saying the risk versus reward is not worth it? Why does it have to come to this legislative body and, and I have to be the one to stand up and say, yeah, we probably shouldn't do this, when our fiduciaries who are putting us into all this debt should be stepping back and saying, now, wait a minute? You know, these are all the risk factors that are going to come into play. So I'm very, very concerned, Madam Speaker, about us moving in this direction of borrowing over the course of 10 years for an investment that's not going to have any return and is going to lose all of its warranties, and if it gets lost in a storm, there's no way that we're going to be able to replace it, and we're going to get stuck with paying the debt service. Very, very frightening, Madam Speaker. And I would like to take this opportunity to once again reiterate my call to the Guam Economic Development Authority, don't be bringing these kind of things forward to our people. You know, we're fortunate that I'm able to analyze these things in this fashion, but this is not the kind of thing that we really should be recommending. That's like recommending that I, that you, Madam Speaker, go out and take a 10-year loan to go replace all the lights in your house, and the loan won't pay for itself until after all the lights in your house are, lose all of their warranties. Oh, and if, you know, a light burns out, or if a kid throws something up and they crack the light, that's on you and you still got to pay the loan and you got to replace the light. Why can't we replace one light at a time with the cash flow that we save? Why can't we get more prudent in the way we manage our cash flow so we can say, you know what, we're saving some here and there, we're going to be replacing lights as we go? We should not go out and, and do this borrowing. I don't think that it's going to, I don't think that the risk is worth it, Madam Speaker. It would just give me nightmares if we did this and a storm hit and we were all of a sudden in the hole. And then as I go through the bill, the special purpose entity, you know, it, it's, its sole purpose is to convert us into these LED lights. And then it's able to, if you look at certain pages, and give me a second here, there's other areas that, that kind of stand out to me. Like on page 16, subsection 82206, pledge of revenues. The way I kind of read that is that it may not need legislative approval to further pledge additional revenue once the, once these bonds are issued. I'm just, I'm just kind of worried, Madam Speaker. And then on page 19, subsection 82212, "The Government of Guam hereby pledges that while any bonds of the authority issued under this article remain outstanding and not fully performed or discharged, the Government of Guam pledges to maintain the rights and remedies of bondholders provided in this article and any indenture." So while we're not pledging the debt ceiling of the government, we are pledging that the rights and remedies of bondholders shall be maintained, which basically means that if we do lose the lights to a storm, we're still going to have to keep paying them, which means that we're going to have to appropriate even more money to the streetlight fund from some source to not only pay for the loan for the lights that we lost in a, in a hypothetical storm, but to replace those lights with LED lights, without LED, LED lights, I don't know, but to replace those because we've made that commitment in this bill. One of the things that was brought up in the, in the hearing was that the lights would be covered under the self-insurance fund of the Guam Power Authority. I'm, I'm, I do not recall seeing that as I, as I parse through the bill. And even then I recall that I, one of the intentions of this body in order to drive down rates to our people is to reduce the amount that's going into that self-insurance fund. So if we're going to be adding on this level of risk where if these lights get wiped out, we're going to have to tap into that self-insurance fund to replace them, would we not then also run the risk of having, having rates go up again in order to begin collecting an adequate amount in that self-insurance fund so that, that money is banked in GPA? So there's all these domino effects that may happen as a result of us going in this direction. I very much appreciate the work of the author. I think that this is definitely a step in the right direction. We need to begin converting our, our energy resources into something more sustainable. We need to begin investing in these kind of resources that are going to save us money over the long term. But we need our Guam Economic Development Authority to stop saying borrow for the sake of borrowing and actually make recommendations to us on how we can transition into those kind of investments without taking on so much risk. This is too risky. This kind of borrowing, in my opinion, Madam Speaker, is too risky. We need to transition into these LED lights. I trust the chairman is going to continue to move us in that direction, which is a very good thing. I just wish that we would have a, a better eye for risk management when it comes to recommending borrowing for our people. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Siniklas. Are there anyone else on the main motion? Speaker Pangolino, you're recognized.
Thank you, and Sidus Massey, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, number one, I want to stand up and say that the bill itself and my position on the bill is not a debate on whether or not it is in the best interest of the people of Guam and the government of Guam to transition ourselves to more energy-efficient, cost-effective lighting technology. I think that, as people would say, that's a no-brainer, that we should take advantage of the developments of technology to move in that direction. But for what purpose of moving in that direction? For me, if it's cost-efficient, if it's better technology, the end result should be lower prices. But the way that, the methodology that's being proposed to transition ourselves there to LED lighting with the streetlight program, it doesn't provide for lower costs at all. Just take a look, and I'm always wary, Madam Speaker, you know, with these kind of schemes that sometimes some of our departments and agencies come up with in cahoots with our Economic Development Authority that says, let's go. We have replaced LED lighting for the high sodium, I'm, I'm not even sure what the technical term is, of this high sodium lighting that we have now that are, you know, supposed to be 70% less efficient than LED lighting. We have already put in, I thought, something like in the neighborhood of 1,000 LED lights. But we're still getting charged under the streetlight fund the same dollar amount for the cost of energizing those LED lights as the high sodium lights. Why? Why haven't we reduced the billing to the Government of Guam from the Guam Power Authority to the reduced rate of operating 70% of the cost of the LED lights? Why do they keep billing us for the same amount of money? And this mechanism being proposed in this bill contemplates doing that the same for 13,000 lights. So why would I want to allow us to go out and borrow money to have cost savings that don't benefit the consumer? It's going to benefit the guy that's going to put in the lights. What is the purpose? Now, I understand, yes, it's good for the environment and I'm all for that, but you got to share the cost of the savings. And I don't see that in here in the mechanism that's being structured in this, in, and is being proposed. That, for me, should be the only reason why we would allow something like this, and it doesn't do it, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, the other thing is the borrowing, once again. You know, we have been able to replace lights. Why can't we continue with that same methodology in terms of replacing these lights? Why can't we take it, why can't we take it out of the self-insurance fund and say, we're going to spend a million dollars this year, replace them? You know? Why do we say that we're going to have somebody borrow the money for us, charge us for borrowing it, pay it back, and not have any savings transferred to the consumers? It's not happening now, and I don't see it happening under this bill, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, the other thing, of course, is while the bill proposes and says that it will not, that the debt will not accrue to the Government of Guam under the debt ceiling because of its special purpose entity, we've, you know, the fiscal note provided by B. of Omar seems to say otherwise, Madam Speaker. "With regards to the issuance of the bonds as authorized, this authority is authorized to issue bond indenture with the understanding that this bond indenture is not a public indebtedness for the authority, but a special obligation of the authority payable solely from revenue specified in the resolution providing for such bond indenture. This resolution requires the approval of the governor. It's noted that this authority does not have a rate mechanism in place to generate income, the authority itself. So how are we going to pay if it doesn't have authority to generate income? So who's going to pay if the authority doesn't have the authority to generate income? This fact, this, it is noted to generate, although it's authorized to recognize fees as revenues. The fact that, this fact is pointed out because this authority is authorized to issue revenue bonds, which are dependent on a steady stream of revenues generated from an identified rate mechanism for services rendered. It appears that any pledging of revenues would come from an assortment of miscellaneous donations, contributions, rentals, rather than a steady revenue stream. To honor, to counteract such unreliability of funding, section 82212, Article 2 of the proposed Chapter 82, is requiring that the Government of Guam, as a pledge, to ensure and... as a pledge to ensure and continue the rights, powers, and duties of the authority needed to fulfill the terms of any agreements made with the bondholders. I think my former colleague had pointed that out as well, that, well, yes, we're saying it's not, but the rights of the bondholders continue, and that the government of Guam continues to ensure the rights of those bondholders. So in effect, this becomes the full faith and credit of the government of Guam without those revenue, uh, uh, structures in place. It is our belief that such pledge made by the government of Guam would change the composition of the revenue bonds issued by the authority into general obligation bonds that would exceed the debt ceiling of the government of Guam, violating section fourteen-twenty-three A of Title Forty-eight U.S.C. Code, section eleven, as we call, as we call them. Such violation would make this proposed legislation inappropriate for execution. So, Madam Speaker, again, while I certainly believe and, and support the author's efforts in taking advantage of the, um, technology that exists today and is being developed constantly and changing, and providing for transition into the utilization of those technological advances, especially in the area of lighting for our community, that the mechanism being proposed just doesn't fit. It doesn't translate into what I have always been very, very much concerned about with regards to the Guam Power Authority and the Guam Water Authority, is that whenever they say, we've got a deal for you, we're going to save money, somebody else is pocketing the savings and not the consumers. Somebody else is walking away with their wallets full while the consumers continue to shell out the high cost of supporting the operations even with those cost savings and implementation. And therefore, Madam Speaker, I don't believe that, um, that this bill, uh, in the manner that it's proposed to handle our transition into cost-efficient, effective lighting and utilization of technology is the appropriate vehicle and the appropriate track that we need to move into that will result in savings for our people. We've gotta reduce the power rates. Madam Speaker, I don't know if you know this, but when I walk into Home Depot, it's hotter. And you know what? When I talk to a couple of the employees and management, why is it hotter in here? We turned our thermostat up because the power rates are killing us. And that's the biggest, biggest hardware store on Guam. Even they are cutting back in that because every savings that we make, we don't translate into reducing the power costs for our people. We don't reduce it in the homes, we don't reduce it in the businesses, and we gotta stop that. And we are then always feeding, feeding the guy who tells us, we've got a deal for you, we got a way for you to save money, and he ends up pocketing the savings, and we continue to struggle with the high cost of power and electricity. And I don't see this bill as changing the dynamics of that. And I think we can change the dynamics of that. I think that if we can work with, uh, with the Power Authority, the Public Utilities Commission, the CCU, I think we can work and change the dynamics so that when a reduction in the operating cost of GPA occurs, a reduction in the cost of the power to light your home and cool your home, light your business, light your business and cool your business can, can result. And therefore, Madam Speaker, I stand expressing those concerns with regards to this bill. Thank you, and Sidus Massey.
You're welcome, Speaker. On the motion, Senator, Senator Munia Barnes?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, um, uh, before this bill was introduced on two-two-seven, um, we had been working closely with the mayor's council of Guam, more, more so, uh, Senator, I mean, Mayor Jesse Palikan at the time, who was the mayor, Baragada, in reference to looking at the possibilities of, um, lighting up, uh, the village is, uh, because there was definitely a shortage of, uh, village streetlights. And in doing so, um, what we had worked with, having oversight of the mayor's council, was to look at, um, um, of course, modern technology today, looking at LED lighting, uh, working, uh, closely with GPA, and probably looking into a public-private partnership. Uh, so, um, when that was being sought out, uh, we had introduced an earlier bill, and of course, um, bill two-two-seven, uh, was also introduced. Um, I want to say, Madam Speaker, that, um, in the efforts of working closely with the mayors, it is important, uh, to realize that, um, there needs to be more lighting in, in the villages. There needs to be more streetlights. Every day, the mayors are asked, um, there is a request from village residents to put a streetlights within their area. Uh, I know for a fact that even, uh, the mayor of Chalampago, where I live, almost on a daily basis, or to be conservative on a weekly basis, that there is that request for streetlights. My attempt, Madam Speaker, um, when I was working with the mayors was to look into more of a public-private partnership, uh, with a vendor out there, but to also look at the possibility as, as we look at smart technology today and modern technology, that the savings that would be received from looking at, um, like for example, the LED lighting, what there would be a savings in, from the power that was generated, the need to use, um, power would be much less. And that the savings from that power would extend the opportunity to add hundreds of more streetlights within the villages. So, Madam Speaker, I, I just wanna say that in the effort of, of, um, trying, of working closely with my colleague who, who believes that, that this is needed, uh, I did want to say for the record that I kind of share the same sentiments of the previous speakers in reference to how, what steps do we need to take to, um, get more streetlights into the villages, but not being able to do it at the backs of, of borrowing again. And, um, you know, some might say that, um, if you borrow and, and, you know, there would be revenues, uh, that would come in from that, or the savings, um, that it would be able to, to work itself out, and that the opportunity, uh, would be, um, to have that extended period of time, uh, to pay off, uh, what is being borrowed. But I personally believe that if we look at a different alternative, um, and one that has, has come to mind with our committee was to be able to extend the opportunities to work a public-private partnerships, look at the, um, the resources or the savings that would be realized by putting in, um, modern, uh, technology, and the savings from that would be able to extend, uh, to add new streetlights or more streetlights. Uh, that was the avenue that I was looking at. And I, I wanted to say that, um, I appreciate the author's intent of making sure that, um, we get more streetlights into the villages, but my reservations or my concerns about borrowing, um, is, is, um, I'm hoping that, that we can come up with some kind of medium, Madam Speaker. So with that in mind, uh, I will continue to listen intently and hopefully, um, take some of the revisions of what I have in, in the previous bill that was introduced and, and talk with the author of, of bill two-two-seven, and maybe we can come up with a, a, a better medium, so, uh, Sinamasi.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, sent to your speaker, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, uh, Madam Speaker. Uh, Madam Speaker, I certainly appreciate the, um, concerns, um, by which bill two-two-seven dash three-two, uh, is, um, laying out a opportunity here to not only change all of these, um, streetlights and make them LED, uh, which will be more, um, energy-efficient, but bill two-two-seven dash three-two, uh, is also creating an opportunity for this legislature to respond to the needs of our residents, uh, by way of having more lights available, uh, throughout the villages and throughout our island. Uh, as you can see, Madam Speaker, and not only has this issue been brought to, um, our attention by the mayors, but as you can see, just driving around in the villages, uh, our homes are dark, uh, our villages are dark. Uh, crime is an all-time epidemic, and I think the greatest deterrent to crime, uh, certainly is to have more lights, um, in these villages and to light up these dark areas. There was once a time when every single corner of this island, uh, was lit up with streetlights, but it was also that same time when it was very difficult to find, uh, someone that would be responsible for paying the bill. Uh, as you know, every time we register our vehicle, um, some monies go to the streetlight fund and twenty-five dollars goes to the recycling revolving fund, but the monies generated, uh, that goes into the streetlight fund to pay for streetlights, as we are told and as we know, is not enough. Uh, it's not enough as it stands now, and our community is still, for the most part, very dark. And so what this bill, uh, does, it, it, it sets up a mechanism so that fifteen thousand streetlights will be converted to LED, but at the same time, those savings realized will provide an opportunity to have one thousand more LED streetlights throughout the island. And certainly we can take a policy decision and say that the savings that we generate by converting fifteen thousand streetlights, uh, and not having any more LED streetlights, that savings will either go down to pay this money that, that needs to be borrowed, or that the savings be translated, translated into reduced, uh, power bills. But I'm not sure that's the kind of, uh, policy we wanna have at this point, where we see the Guam Power Authority, uh, including the Guam Water Works Authority, every time they need to move forward to upgrade the system, that cost has to be translated and trans, trans, uh, passed on, rather, to the consumer as regulated by the Public Utilities Commission. We also see the Guam Power Authority state over and over that the, their high cost of operations results really from all the field that they have to buy and that how GPA is reliant on fossil fuels, which makes it for more, uh, expensive, uh, operation. But this bill, Madam Speaker, while I understand the, um, reservations and the approach, I certainly am proud to be a co-sponsor because it's kind of, uh, takes advantage of GPA's ability to borrow money, but it also says that the savings that they will generate will go into providing more streetlights throughout our island. And I, I also understand the comments of the most previous speaker, uh, where she also had an initiative with the public-private partnership, but that public-private partnership type arrangement also translates to a liability of the government. Someone's going to put up the money and expect, have a reasonable expectation for that kind of investment, and there's going to be, um, mechanisms set up for, for, in the event those reasonable expectations are not met. But in response to a, um, comment about what happens when these lights, streetlights are damaged as a result of the typhoon, uh, I went through the committee report, and there was a committee report, uh, indicated that in the case of Pangsangwa, where fifteen percent of the streetlights were damaged, all fifteen percent of those streetlights that were damaged during that typhoon was replaced by FEMA, and so, uh, GPA has also gone on the record saying that there's no cap as to the amount of, um, damage they can claim as a result of these, uh, typhoons. So I don't know, Madam Speaker, if we really want to go and replace each streetlight, one streetlight at a time. I don't think our people, uh, can be reasonably expected to be that patient while crime in the villages continues to go on, on the rise, and I, I think we have to address what's happening in our communities, in our homes, on a multi-level, on a multi-pronged approach, and certainly bill two-two-seven dash three-two is one of those approaches. And in the spirit of recognizing, um, the previous speaker and, and her work to respond to the mayor's request to have more streetlights, I, I voluntarily submit to you, Madam Speaker, and our colleagues, uh, to move that Senator Barnes be placed as the second co-sponsor of this bill, and I don't have any personal objections to making myself the third sponsor.
On that amendment, no objections, it's ordered.
Point of information, Madam Speaker?
Please state your point of information.
Just to clarify, um, on, on page four of the bill, subsection eight-two-one-zero-four, uh, it was stated, um, in the retiring speaker that the, um, that this bill would provide more lights, but, um, that section specifically states that the authority is created with the limited and sole purpose of facilitating the replacement and conversion of existing streetlights. There's nothing here contained herein that says that we're going to buy more lights. I just wanted to clarify that, uh, in the dialogue. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Senator Rodriguez, you're recognized on the motion.
Thank you, um, good morning, Madam Speaker.
Good morning.
Madam Speaker, um, you know, I, uh, support the, uh, intent of this legislation, however, I do have, um, reservations as well. I think, um, the, um, I don't think anyone would argue, um, the intent of this bill, which is to get our, our high, um, our high energy costs of, of powering up the streetlights and converting it into, um, LED streetlights, where we know that there is, um, proven, uh, fact that this would, um, this would, uh, use less, less power, um, and then of course, less, um, fuel. However, um, Madam Speaker, I just don't, um, I don't believe that us allowing, uh, GPA to, to go out and borrow, once again, to replace the streetlights is the most practical thing to do. I think there's, there's a lot of other alternatives. Um, one of the retiring speakers talked about, uh, a PPP setup. I think, um, all of us here have been, uh, visited and talked to by, um, people in the industry that talk to you and say, look, we want to be able to, um, we want to be able to do this. The government doesn't have to, you know, come up with the money upfront. Uh, we will put those mechanisms, mechanisms in place that will ensure that, um, number one, we're tracking these, these, um, these, uh, the power use of these streetlights, and savings are then used to, to, to pay off the installation. And so, um, you know, as I, I read through the, um, the bill, the first part, of course, is something that I wholeheartedly agree with. It, it talks about the need to, to replace the streetlights, but the second part is where I have that, um, is where I have the reservation. Uh, we don't, I know in the committee report, we talk about the number of streetlights that need to be changed. Uh, there's, there's, there's mention about the, um, the, the dollar amount that, uh, may, may need to be, um, acquired to make these changes. However, it's not something that's specific, um, in the bill. And I'm sure that, um, if they do move forward with, um, you know, with this bill and the, um, the borrowing scheme is, is something they move forward with, it's gonna have to come back here with those details. However, um, you know, even, I think one of the speakers, retiring speakers talked about how, um, how do we even know, um, for sure that we are saving, um, you know, we are saving, you know, in, in the streetlights that were replaced already today? There was about a thousand streetlights in Tu, in, in Tuamont, I believe, and around the main roads that were replaced, but do we have a, a way to measure the exact, um, reduction in, in power costs? As I said earlier, we all know, um, it's, it's a fact, right, that you change into LED, um, these are energy-efficient lighting. You know, you'll see savings, but I just don't, you know, we don't have the mechanism, we don't have that, that way to measure. Um, I know some places around the island have metered streetlights that we're able to determine, um, but for the vast majority, we can't make that determination. And so- And so I look at it as if we, if we get, if we go into a PPP setup, I'm sure, I'm, you know, for certain, that these companies that are engaged in this will ensure that that mechanism is put in place to make sure that, you know, we're able to see the true savings of this. So I'm going to continue to listen. I support wholeheartedly the intent to replace our streetlights, but just not sure if this proposal in front of us and how to get there is the right way to go. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, are there any others who would like to speak? There being none? I'm sorry? I know he had his point of information, but I... So we're going to take a brief recess.
Now, through this mechanism here, if we were going to go out and borrow, is that we know that these lights are more energy efficient, but as Mayor Gogwi indicated at the public hearing, he said, you know, "We don't want to have to wait until 10 years from now after we've paid off this thing and then to start enjoying the benefits of these energy-efficient streetlights," is let's take that benefit up front now. And so basically, and again, I don't think this is the bill where we should be discussing that additional 1,000 streetlights, because as I indicated earlier, there would have to be a companion bill that this SPE will come to the legislature for, to seek authorization to go out to the bond market. Approaches to converting our streetlights, now, some have suggested, you know, as let's change it one streetlight at a time. As we get the money, let's go ahead and change it out. And I guess that's one approach that we could explore, but I'm sure also that, you know, we would not be able to get the benefits of the economies of scale to go out there and do that. And changing, you know, one streetlight at a time as funds become available will take us a month of Sundays to be able to complete that. Just to change out 15,000 streetlights is going to take about two years of dedicated effort to be able to change out those streetlights. And so, you know, we'll be here until kingdom come to, you know, if we're going to change one streetlight at a time. Another approach was raised about possibility of going into a public-private partnership. Well, the public-private partnerships that GPA has gotten into has basically been with a private partner, and there's that direct agreement between the Guam Power Authority and the private partner. A good example of that is our power plants. Basically, that investor puts up the power plant, and GPA enters into an agreement with that investor guaranteeing that they will buy a guaranteed amount of power annually so that at least they'll be able to meet their debt service. Now, in this case, if we're going to go into a public-private partnership, I know that another approach that was being looked at was for this private investor to actually contract with the Department of Public Works, who is actually the customer out there for these streetlights. But the problem with that is that, of course, now, you've got this, you know, this private investor entering to an agreement with DPW to get these LED streetlight services, but in the middle, they're going to come and agree, but GPA has to be somewhere in there because the poles belong to GPA, and then it comes a host of problems of, you know, when that streetlight burns out, was it because of GPA's faulty wirings that go into it? Or it'd be a lot easier if it was a partnership directly with the Guam Power Authority. Now, what Bill 227 does, as I said, it creates this special-purpose entity, who then goes out into the market to borrow the funds. And as it does that, it also would have to have the guarantee from the Guam Power Authority that it will purchase the LED streetlight services that it's making available at a certain amount so that it can meet its debt service requirements. Now, in turn, the Guam Power Authority is going to have to turn around to the Department of Public Works/Guam, that for the next 10 years, basically, we're going to have, it's going to have to continue paying for, basically, at the same level, the amount of money that is paid to GPA for the streetlight services. And what that does is, out of that amount, there will be an additional 1,000 streetlights that will be deployed, that can be deployed out in the villages. It will be able to get streetlights that certainly are a lot more energy efficient, and the quality of the lights certainly is a lot better. And so, you know, it's, you can easily get confused with how this thing works, but, you know, there's, I think, I know that at the public hearing, the Guam Power Authority testified that, you know, if it had its choice of which arrangement to make, to take, the PPA, the private, public-private partnership, or basically the creation of the special-purpose entity, they've indicated that the special-purpose entity would work a lot better for them. The issue about the concern that if we put up these streetlights, and it only has a warranty of 10 years, and after that, if a typhoon comes by and knocks out, you know, the estimated average 30% or whatever, well, you know, that's why the Guam Power Authority has set up a self-insurance program so that it can cover for these damages if, in fact, a typhoon does occur. It has done that deliberately, and it recognizes that, you know, it is not a risk-free world out there, and that we have to be proactive in being able to respond to natural disasters. The question about why haven't we, or how do we know how much is actually being saved by these streetlights? Well, there was those 2,000 streetlights that were made available, funding through ERA, which the Guam Power Authority has put up, and those funds, I mean, those streetlights were actually basically the test lab for the Guam Power Authority to be able to track how much, in fact, energy savings they were getting out of these streetlights. And so there are, there is data available, and they estimate it's upwards of about almost 50% in energy consumption, and so, you know, there is savings in the conversion of these streetlights to LED. Now, if despite all that discussion, Madam Speaker, as I've always, as I indicated from the very beginning, this is a two-step process. One is the creation of the special-purpose entity, and we've got to get that created first. And if, in fact, there is opposition to, and then what follows to that is, then the special-purpose entity is going to have to come to the legislature and ask authorization from the legislature to go out and borrow the money. If the legislature disapproves it then, no loss. I mean, well, at least nothing happens then at that time. I just hope that somebody else comes up with a better idea. But the passage of Bill 227 is a first step, and I think if we pass this bill, then it allows us to move on to the next step. Somebody has suggested, "Well, why don't you put them both together?" Well, because it's kind of like two different, two different issues. When that special-purpose entity comes in to request authorization, that bill is going to have to go to another committee to be, to be heard. And so it's just trying to simplify the process, take it a step at a time, make sure we're on sure footing, because I think that we're moving into new territory here, and it kind of gives that, it's a conservative move. So, Madam Speaker, I ask my colleagues to favorably consider this bill. And for those who were at the public hearing, certainly, the Guam Power Authority is asking that we create this if we're actually going to want to start transitioning to the LED streetlights. So with that, Madam Speaker, I just would ask my colleagues to, for their support, and I would ask that the bill be moved down to the voting file. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. On the motion to send Bill 227 to the third reading file without any objections, ordered. Speaker Panglinen, understand that Bill 78 has been circulated, so, or distributed to the members.
Thank you, Insidus Massey, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to, I'd like to move that Bill Number 78-32COR be placed in the third reading file.
And you'd like to speak on it?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Very briefly, Madam Speaker, Bill Number 78 would restore a seat on the territorial board, or the Guam Board of Education, that used to be there before the recomposition. If you recall, in the prior recomposition of the Guam Board of Education, the Mayor's Council of Guam appointed a non-voting member to the Board of Education to assist the Board of Education and to be the liaison between the Mayor's Council of Guam and the Guam Board of Education. There's a tremendous amount of partnership that occurs between the mayors of the villages and the schools in their villages, and we found that having a member of the Mayor's Council facilitated that partnership and cooperation. And so what this bill would do would be to restore that seat to the Guam Board of Education and continue the avenue and the path that had existed in the past for the exchange of information and support and cooperation between the mayors and the schools in their villages through the Guam Board of Education. Thank you, Insidus Massey, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. On the motion, Senator Yamashita, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I have a question, and perhaps the author would yield to the question, and the question is, I absolutely agree with what he said about the value of the mayor being at a table, mayor representative, because they really have a front-row glimpse of what the students and the families are faced with, challenged with, and what they celebrate. The question I have is, why would we not want the representative to be a voting member instead of a non-voting member?
Speaker Panglinen, do you yield to the question?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, the, as I mentioned, the original seat at the Board of Education for the mayor's representative was a non-voting member. With the facilitation of the elected school board, the members of the board are, who are voting members, are elected by the general public. Now, we've changed that and gone back to having administration representatives being appointed that vote as well. And so it, for me, it was to restore that seat, to allow that exchange, and the voting members are appointed by voting, are, voting members are directly voted on, either directly voted on by the general public to represent them on policy issues, and the other members that have voting authority are elected by those that are elected by the people of Guam in their capacity. So that really is the only reason why we proposed the bill in the fashion that it's being presented at this time, because of the way that the board is constituted and where the powers of the members derive their authority, and they're either from direct election for that very purpose of setting policy for the board, or appointed by those individuals with direct authority over the overall government of Guam in that respect. So that's the only reason why.
So, Madam Speaker, the people of Guam elect certain representatives, and they are voting members. The governor appoints certain members, and they vote on the board. The mayor's council decides who sits on the mayor's council, and I believe that that person should have a... person shall have, should have the authority and the responsibility of a vote as well. I'm trying real quickly to remember how many voting members we have right now, and maybe legal counsel can help us figure that out. I mean, I always know that there's always a concern about the number of voting members so that it's not an, we have to make sure it's an odd number. And I don't know, I think there's seven board members? Right?
Yes, yes.
Seven, and so that would make it eight, but I really think the mayor representative should have the power of a vote with that responsibility, but I don't know how to balance out that concern of having an even number of votes.
I'm going to, you're right, because we're going to have to get some more information. I'm just going to, if it's okay with everyone, if we can just go ahead and do an early lunch recess, and when you come back this afternoon, then at 2:00, we'll pick up with you.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. We'll be recessed.